Decide who will go to that meeting, is that right?
Yeah. The reason, just to come back, the reason I say that Ruth, if we cannot approach 2021, three years.
That's fine.
Not doing anything.
Yeah. Is there anything else on the action list? If not, we move on to item seven, the budgets. So if anyone's got anything that they, it's early on in the year. But if anyone's got anything they want to question. Page one, Mike.
Can I, can I just confirm that the cemetery lodge is now tenanted again?
Yes, it is. So there was about a six week break in the middle of May, the new tenants came in.
Right, thank you.
There's like, there's page one. Page two.
It was actually page four we're starting on, isn't it?
Page three.
No, this is the first, but this is the normal budget report.
This is income and expenditure. Page five. Thank you. So the second part of that is to receive and discuss a revised budget forecast for 2021, and that's the other document that you've all mentioned previously. That says about T C and A. So I've been asked. The projection is that the budget will be overspent by eleven thousand, three hundred and fifteen pounds. And then we've got the detail of how it's changed due to the exceptional circumstances of Covid nineteen. That's as touch free.
Can I propose we accept these figures and keep them in at the next meeting because they may change? They're not going to be permanent. They may get better, they may get worse.
Yeah. That's a Smith.
Item two, four, eight, four, zero, one, three, equipment purchase has gone up to four thousand pounds. Presumably that is all because of Covid type purchases, is it?
Yeah, that's where I put all the extra bits of P P E and equipment for the guys and that kind of thing.
Right, thanks. It's good to have an idea, I think, of how much Covid is costing us. In addition, things like.
Yes, thank you for those, for that budget report. That's a touch free.
I think it would be worth, we received a report at a previous meeting about underspend and we were gonna receive an understanding of that. But I think we, perhaps when we next receive this report, the town clerk would have time to put something together about the underspend, because I think many of the underspend will cancel out many of these concerns.
Yeah, I think, I think some of the figures are reductions. So that it's just that the net amount is eleven thousand additional. There's over and under spends that come out to that in total. So yeah, it is included, Robin. Okay, and we've we're happy with those figures. Thank you, Paul. Item eight, Covid nineteen update from the Estates Manager. Lee.
Yeah, I mean, we've been sort of carrying on really well. I think I was speaking to the Dino guys one to ones this week and I was saying, I think we've managed quite well to carry on with grass cutting. We're well into sort of hedge cutting and things like that now, and we've put lots of things in place to make, make sure the guys are safe. The guys have got the, the extra van now that just arrived today. And we've been sort of scheduling works where, where we can, guys have been off decorating up at Lace Hill or it was the lodge while that was empty. So they're starting and finishing on one site. So we've, we've managed around it really well and we've been, we've put some extra things in place where, where needed. And it, and it was going to change, looks like it's going to change a lot over the next coming month or so as well. And we'll just adapt to that change as and when we can, really.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
And it's Mike Smith and then Margaret Caitley.
Thank you. Can, can I just ask whether there's been any additional signage or pavement markings and this sort of stuff put out because of the easing up from today in town? Have we taken that on board or anything at all?
Yeah, so we have requested a load of signs from Buckinghamshire Council after various bits of discussion. They, they initially came up with a list of things which wouldn't have been that helpful. So it's kind of if you wanted signs for a single way pedestrian route. Then on, I think it was Thursday, they decided they were going to get a wider variety. So we're going to pick up some tomorrow and get them hopefully put up around town tomorrow, which are mostly signs saying either please beware that this stretch of pavement isn't wide enough to socially distance on, or please socially distance. So they're vague enough that if it drops from two metres to less, the same signs will continue. And I know we've discussed this in E D W G and T C E, but there really isn't anywhere in town you could put in a one way pedestrian system that would be viable. There's various bits in town where there's narrow pavements. But I just don't see how you could have a one way system, for example, past Clay's that anybody's going to take any notice of. It's the only way it would work would be you'd have to use the crossing back around the other side of the old J and then cross the Morton Road. So the short answer is yes, some signs are up tomorrow.
And Margaret and then back to Mike.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to say that I think the Green Spaces team have done a fantastic job. And I know I've had various positive comments made by various members of the public. So I think you've adapted to the difficult situation that everybody's been in. And I think the parks look great and, you know, you've done a good job in very trying circumstances. So thank you very much. I'd like that to be recorded. That's proposal that that be recorded. I don't know if somebody can second that.
Happy to second that.
Thank you.
We all agree.
Yes.
Definitely.
And Mike, did you want to come back?
Yeah, we're going to come on to sorting out the town a bit more at a, at a, an item further down the agenda. Although we've had a little bit there, but I particularly wanted to mention, and this is, this is probably a bit of a strange one for me. I, I cycled through the park, through Borton Park today to town to drop off a prescription, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm, I'm really impressed by the wildflower planting and that. I think that is absolutely tremendous. There's been quite a bit of focus on that, on, on social media and that. I think that the, the Green Spaces team need particular congratulations about that as well. It's a tremendous addition to the park, I think.
Yeah.
Robin.
Thank you. That is part one of the things I was going to say. I'm glad Mike said it. One, one thing I think we need to be aware of, if anyone noticed, now we've got more people using the park and they're going to use the parks in a different way to what they did before. I went through Borton Park at the weekend to note stuff and, and it's very well used. I just want to be reassured that we've probably been privileged with non-overfilling of our waste bins now. But now we're going to enter a time where people are choosing to picnic in the park. They're choosing to be in the park because it's nicer than being at home. And the Borton Park particularly was completely packed at the weekend. We're not packed, but people were very responsible in their spacings. All the benches that we'd put in over the years were being used. All the chairs and places that we'd put in there were being sat on. And where they weren't being sat on, people were, you know, safe distancing in four squares in the park. Now, we just need to be assured, and I know Lee will be looking at this, that the, that we can monitor the rubbish because the success of everything we're doing will be wiped out if for one afternoon's joyous event in the park. Are we assured that the we may have to look up in the, the empty litter bins if we need to, a drop of a drop of a pen, like really, because I think we're going to need to do that. Looking at other places on social media in the town which are under our responsibility, which are covered in litter.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we're, we're monitoring. There was a real peak a couple of weekends ago. And yeah, we're just keeping it under review. There might be a need in the future to do a Sunday morning litter clear, litter pick and been empty, but we'll, we'll keep it under review.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And item nine, the water bottle refill station. Over to Lee again.
Yeah, so just to update people, we've pretty much had it, it's fully installed. All it needs is the last pipes connecting and the actual, actual unit fitting to it and commissioning. I've sort of holding far a little bit to tie in with opening up of the toilets for Lee again. I'll go into a bit more detail in that, a bit further on in the agenda. Because it's still to do with the cleaning of it and, and the current situation. But we are, it's almost ready to go. And I think when we are, we'll do proper press releases and and hopefully do a bit of a formal opening and all that kind of stuff in due course.
Yeah, thank you. Item ten, three dozen steps to health in our towns. That's a Harvey.
Yes, I've, my apologies. I've just sent everyone an email, which some of you will have got by now. It seems if the wrong paper has gone in the in the notes for the meeting. Not quite sure what happened. If it was my fault, I'm sincerely sorry. But there was a paper that I read specifically for this meeting. And it's entitled Monday, fifty of the June, right at the top of it, but that's not the one that's appeared. So the one you've got is a bit out of date. And actually misses the key point of this, for this meeting, which was to agree a motion as a model motion that we can explain to other parishes who wish to come on board, that we have at least passed it. Now, I don't know what situation we're now in, given that the paper with that detailed, I mean, I've got it written down and I can read it out to you. And you will have now got copies of it in your inbox in the last few minutes. Whether we can take that paper and that motion, I don't know. If we can, that would be great. If we can't, well, we'll find something else we can do.
What do you think, Paul?
The, the item, the item is on the agenda, so we can discuss the item because it's on the agenda. It's not that uncommon for us to send a report late, but it is where the council, but it's quite a lot of information on councillors, especially if we're actually really asking for a significant decision. But I don't think we are asking for a significant decision, John. I think it's more of a
update. It's more of a kind of preparatory motion. It's not making any definitive decision. It's not asking for any money to be spent at this stage. If I give you the background, the idea is to try and recruit other town councils nearby in a kind of shared collaboration slash competition to increase the numbers of people out walking. I have since writing this paper, written to a number of neighbouring councils, including Winslow, Elsbury, Toaster, Brackley and so on. And also Bletchley East and West, apparently. They have two councils in Bletchley. And so far I've had very minimal response, has to be said. And the idea is to get commitment in principle from those councils. Now, if we don't really get any response from those councils, even during this lockdown time, the project is probably pretty well dead in the water in terms of it being a shared thing between different councils. But what I've asked them to do is to consider passing a motion at their council that I'm asking us to pass at our council today. And I read the motion out to you, so you've got it at least in your mind and you can check the wording in your inbox if you can find the report that I've just sent you. So the recommendation is to note the attached report and approve the following motion. Here in Buckingham, we believe that exercise is good for everyone. It is great for our physical and mental wellbeing. And in turn, a healthier town is a happier and more prosperous town. A new initiative is being developed called Three Dozen Steps to Health in Our Towns, which aims to get more people taking good levels of exercise. The hope is to get people who are not currently exercising very much, but wish to do more to do so. We are committed to doing all that we can to encourage at least nine teams of four people from our town in the summer of twenty twenty one to agree to be part of this initiative that aims to involve several nearby towns. Each team and each town will then compete and cooperate with other teams and our neighbouring towns for some celebratory prizes to be awarded in October twenty twenty one at a joint event. To this end, we will work with neighbouring town councils who have agreed to be part of this project in order to source necessary funding to establish the initiative. So that's, that's the motion I'm asking people to pass. It's essentially saying, let's, let's have a go, folks, at this. And if we can have a go at it, let's start doing some work around trying to find a source of funding, be it the lottery, which obviously we've now got some track record on, or maybe other sources, perhaps H S two, maybe, I don't know.
I'm going to let Paul speak first and then Margaret and Lisa.
I think that, that is quite a specific motion, John. I think it's a big ask to ask councillors to agree that without having had prior sight of it. We, we have got an additional meeting in the diary for July. So it might be best to put it on the meeting for them, which wouldn't be as bad a delay as waiting till September.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Margaret?
Well, I think with what Paul's just said, if we agree that, that's fine. Because although I'm sure we're all wanting every, to every encouragement to exercise more, and I think one positive thing out of Covid nineteen is people are out exercising more than normal.
Yeah.
But that's a long paper to have looked through without, and particularly you put to note the attached report. But I personally can't vote to note the attached report when I haven't read it. So I'm sure there's nothing controversial in it, but.
Lisa and then Christine.
Thank you. Can I ask, John, through you, Ruth? I obviously have, I've just tried to skim read it quickly, but I haven't noticed anything in there about anybody that might have any mobility issues or disabilities. There's a lot of wording on walking. But not everybody can walk. So I just wondered, like, how people with disabilities or mobility issues can be incorporated in this as a, as an idea.
I guess the, the issue of the, of the of the challenge is to get people exercising more. And obviously the way in which that's done is generally speaking through some sort of physical activity. And walking is the one that often a lot of people are choosing to use. There's lots of cyclists. It's not a cycling challenge. It's not a, it's not a running challenge. It's, it's a walking challenge. There are systems whereby teams, people can take part, but there has to be some sort of measure against which people can be, in a sense, turn their exercise into, shall we say, steps. Steps is the usual measure for this. So for example, when Julie, my wife, took part in a collective activity in her workplace, which is the C C G in, in Norton Keynes. If you did a Pilates class, then you got a credit for so many steps as if you'd walked a certain number. So an hour's worth of Pilates equaled X number of steps and so forth. Now, it's certainly feasible to actually create those sort of challenges for people with mobility problems, but it does involve exercise. So I don't know what exercise would be best targeted for people with mobility problems. But it would have to be something that would be translatable into a, a common currency. Now, it could be steps, or if you want to, it could be kilojoules or whatever we want to make it. But the idea is to have some way of measuring and comparing the energy expended by, by people from one team to another.
Can I come back, Ruth? Yeah, I want Christine to have a chance.
Sorry.
Christine and then Lisa, back to Lisa.
Thank, thank you. What I was going to say wasn't, wasn't to do with disability or mobility at all. So I'm sorry, Lisa, to interrupt you. Except that, of course, you could do it on your exercise bike. You know, that's how I do my steps, which is great. But no, I was just going to say how pleased I was, John, to see on this talk about nearby councils, because it always seems so terrible to actually not have anything to do with, say, Brackley, when it really is such a close town just because of where the boundaries are. So really pleased to see that taken into account.
Except, can I just go and just respond to Christine's point? Except that Brackley is the only council to have written back so far and to have declined to be involved because Brackley council did not see themselves as being involved in such activities.
That's Lisa and then Robin.
Thank you. Yeah, taking on board your Pilates example, John. And I guess in that, with that, people with, like elderly people, they have like chair exercises that they can do if they're not able to get down on the ground, things like that. So I guess there are other ways that we can have a look at involving everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm absolutely open to that, Lisa. I mean, obviously, you know, it's me and my Fitbit that kind of brought to some of this. And I've been involving with various people in public health. And also there is a part of the, a woman that works for the, for the council who, you know, gets people walking and moving around in different parts of the county as well. But absolutely, I mean, that's one of the ideas is that we can certainly, you know, this can be adapted. And I think we can turn, you know, if we can turn, you know, steps into kilojoules, then kilojoules would be a measure as well. I mean, I, I, if we want to make it, I mean, there are something, you know, I want to try and make it an inclusive competition and therefore it isn't always about the amount. It's about improvement as well. So if people are doing sitting exercises and they're expending, I don't know, fifteen joules a week or whatever it might be. And by the end of the, of the two months, they're doing a hundred and fifty joules a week, then that should get praise and award as part of that. But obviously that, you know, compared to a walker who's expended two thousand five hundred joules.
Okay, Robin, Mike, and then we'll leave the rest of the discussion to the next meeting in July.
Well, firstly, thank you for the initiative. Secondly, disappointment, we got the wrong report. Because I think perhaps we could have agreed something tonight. But lastly, when we do have the report, can we have something included about estimated involvement of the council officers and time and that type of thing? There will be some time on the margins, but we have to be very careful when we agree these things. That we don't suddenly create a whole new work stream that we hadn't actually envisaged. Because that was, would, you know, there's lots of things going on in the town. And hopefully we'll be busy by then, but I think it's a really good idea. But I just disappointed we couldn't move it on tonight and, and we have got time till twenty twenty one, clearly. So those just really the, the last bit really, to make sure that we've got some quantum, by how much we're going to use our council staff and that, rather than agree and then try and work out who's doing it. I think we need, I don't want to kill it for any reason. I want it to succeed. So I just want a little bit of management around there. Because I haven't got your report, John, to read.
I know, I know.
I apologize.
Mike first and then John.
Okay, just a couple of questions for John, really. Brackley pulled out of the earlier scheme. Might they be inclined to come in on this new scheme? And secondly, have I read the paper right or scanned the paper right? And it's nine teams from this town and each and every other parish that takes part? Or is it nine teams altogether?
Well, okay, to respond to those questions, if I can remember each one of them. In terms of the impact upon staff, I would not be asking for any money or time to be spent on this yet. This is simply a kind of facilitating motion that I've put up. And it will depend upon then if any other councils come forward. If no other councils come forward positively, then this frankly is dead in the water anyway. At that point, if, say, I don't know, Elsbury, Toaster, West Bletchley and Elsbury, say, come forward and say, we want to be a part of this, then it would then be a question of haggling, in a sense, between the various councils involved to see who's going to put in the legwork to try and get the funding. And I appreciate that will take staff time. But that's some way down the track. This is more of a motion to say, this is the direction of travel. Let's go there. And then when we get to the next step, at that point, we need to decide how, how we take this forward. Because obviously I'd be saying, you know, if it's going to be down to one of the town council staff to do this, to actually put the, the legwork in as, as Louise did with Buxplor, then there would need to be some sort of way of the other, of the other councils helping that in some shape or form. I don't know how we do that, but that's, that's, that's what I've got in my head. In terms of, I've now forgotten your questions, Mike. Can you remind me again what the questions were?
If I might remind John, Brackley pulled out of the earlier scheme, but do we know that they wouldn't want to take part in this new scheme?
No, actually pulled out of this one, Mike.
Sorry?
And the reason that Brackley pulled out of this one is because they don't think this is what town council should be doing.
Right, and the second point of my question was, having just scanned the thing, you make reference to nine teams. Is that nine teams per town are participating authority or nine teams?
Yeah, it is nine teams per town, that thirty six people, basically. But it's not, it's not set in stone, Mike. It could be, it could be five teams. It could be, it could be ten teams. It's just, mine seemed like a nice round number.
Just a question. I'm happy to debate the thing further at the next meeting.
Yes, thank you, John. We look forward to receiving that at the next meeting. All right, item eleven, War Memorial. To receive the written report from the Estates Manager that's looking into moving the War Memorial. Lee?
Do you want me to say something, Lee, or do you want to?
Oh.
Yeah, so thi- this came out of some kind of informal conversations after last year's Remembrance Sunday, Remembrance event and the event the year before. Clearly, there's a, there's a significant issue that it's getting harder to have a viable event and it's starting to exclude people who can't attend it. And Lee's laid out the kind of, the background of some of the challenges around moving it. A very rough figure of the cost, who knows, to actually get proper costs. Yeah, so it's really taking view on whether, in principle, the committee thinks it's something we should explore and do some detailed work on. I presume we'd have to go to full council for final decision, but it's within this committee's remit initially to kind of consider it as an asset.
Okay, personally, I just wanted to say the advantages of where it is now is that the sides are sloped, so people can see the War Memorial, although it does get very full up. And I think if it went to the flat glass, grass area, I assume it would be one end or the other, so that that space can still be used for activities such as, you know, pancake race and whatever else. The other thing is the way that it's grown and originally it was just, for example, there's a lot more organisations laying wreaths. There's schools from outside Buckingham that come and lay them, you know, primary schools or private schools that are based in other villages that have probably got their own War Memorials. So it's just something that I've noticed over the years. But I do accept that it seems to, certainly the young youth groups get squashed down that side of the triangle. Whereas the other sides are a lot more spaced out. So again, I think maybe it can be improved in the spacing. But who was first? Out of.
Mike was first.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm happy for inquiries to be made, et cetera, et cetera. But I am a little bit worried, and you touched upon it, Sharon, that the that the placing the War Memorial on the grassed area, I'm just wondering if that would detract from other events happening there, like the, the church holiday club, our pancake race, other events that can, that can happen on there. It would though, in my view, perhaps make it easier when it comes to the dismount of getting people out of there and taking it forward. But I'm, I'm quite taken by the fact that you can see the memorial from the town, looking up the, the street there. And you won't be able to if it's put on the grass. And the thought is that if, if you get the hundreds of people trampling all over that grass on Remembrance Sunday when it's been precipitating prodigiously, it's going to chew that grass to hell and back.
Well.
For the, the inquiries to be made.
Yeah. Margaret and then Lisa and then Robin.
Well, that'd be out first, wouldn't it, Mike?
Thank you very much. And it makes me feel quite uncomfortable. I don't know why, the idea of moving it. And I guess that other people in the community would probably share that kind of view. And when the advice from the War Memorials Trust is that we shouldn't really do this unless the memorials are at risk, that makes me feel even more uncomfortable about it. I mean, I, I know that it is a squash there and I, I just wonder whether there's a better way of managing the numbers and helping particularly with the younger children so that they've got helping particularly with the younger children so that they've got, that their needs are really addressed properly, but to solve that problem by moving it somewhere else, I, I just don't think at the moment I'm convinced that that's a, a good idea.
Lisa?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with the comments so far. I feel uncomfortable if it was to be moved onto the grass. And I was going to say the same point as Mike, that if it's a rainy day, you've then got people standing all over the grass, which is going to be a good look. It does, for me, it does come down to the organisation of how people are brought into that area. And because we've got little ones like the, the cubs and the brownies, I'm wondering whether the placement in the actual line, whether they were put up ahead, like you've got the band and then you've got us and soldiers. And if they were put up, like say behind us, for example, then their entry into the church area would be behind us. So I'm wondering whether it's just something that that could be looked at as to where they are placed in that lineup.
Yeah, you're right, because the little ones are the last ones to come in, aren't they? Robin?
Yeah, thank you. Well firstly, whatever you do with this, it's going to be an emotive issue one way or the other. So you're not going to win. It's an emotive issue on the day we do the Remembrance Day. But over the years, we've now got from standing people around the war, or to stand in chairs. Now, we originally had a few chairs for people who needed to sit on them. And now we've got more chairs and we've got people up against the church wall. And consequently, it, it appears an organisational thing may be the first approach while keeping this under review. And maybe we should send it back to events and have a discussion with them while in advance of getting some understanding where it is, because over the years, the customer practice, the town councillors who are supporting the mayor, we've got up there and there, and you get people in different positions. So we take up a certain amount of space, the British Legion take a certain amount of space. And, and because it's successful, we've got so many young people coming. But then of course, what happens is if you arrive early and look, is many of the parents get up there early to be there to receive their children because they know they won't get in. So it's a case of, it, it's really being struggled by its success. It's the success of the event which is actually causing the problems. But I do think we need, could make a lot more space if we had a discussion about how many chairs we need. Because having a whole bank of chairs all the way along the wall, with the civic guests split into two areas, the mayor not knowing where he or she should stand and the, and the church giving out announcements and one thing and another, I think we just need to take it back and sit down with them and see if there's some way we can actually iron out some of these problems. If we can't, we are where we are. But that's better than spending £20,000 and probably annoy 50% of the population who, who will believe like Mike said, you can no longer see it from the town. That was part of my heritage and, and, and upset people. Because whatever you do with this, you've just got to bear in mind emotions. So can I propose that we send it back to the events committee to go and have a discussion about for this year? See if we can do something to try and make more space there somehow?
Yeah, I'm happy to second that. And John?
Yeah, you beat me to it, Ruth. I would obviously second what Robin just said as well. I mean, I, I think I, I sadly, I don't think this is a runner at all. I don't think there's any justification for moving the war memorial. There are plenty of war memorials in far worse situations than this, and yet it's accommodated and so forth. I think it's all about crowd control. It's all about, you know, organising a proper plan for how the actual event is marshalled. And frankly, since, you know, since 27, 2018, when it was obviously very, very popular because of the 100th anniversary and so forth, then, then I don't, then it's been a significant failure. And I think I felt to an extent that if something were to happen and a small brownie was, was to be crushed under the feet of, of, of a big scalp, shall we say, I don't know, then I'm not sure who would be to blame. And I think the lawyers would be looking to blame somebody. And I think it's really now is the time, and I agree with Robin, it should go back to TCE. So the TCE can actually make a very clear request that the organisers and the church and us get together and formulate a clear, blooming plan so that we know who's going to stand where, the order of people going in and how to accommodate the numbers of public who are arriving as well. There needs to be a much, much, much better plan for it than we've had so far.
And Robin is right, there were so many chairs there and only a few of them were used. It was like three rows, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Three rows of like 15 chairs.
I was going to bring my own chair next year, this year, to make sure there's more chairs. Because obviously we are in a meeting about chairs now. The chairs are important, we must have more chairs. It looked like that. And then children got nowhere to get in. And if we can't look after our children and get them to come to it and make it a nice event for them, they'll never return. It's about them.
So we all agreed to send this back to T C and E and no one has spoken in favour of moving the memorial. No. Everyone has spoken with reasons against it. Okay, thank you. Item 12, Tindric Triangle Development. Verbal report from the town clerk. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, so you'll recall that we've agreed in principle to investigate taking on the management of the green space at the Tindric Triangle. There was a bit of a vacuum for a while. I then had a meeting with a new chap from up there who was very positive and was going to send various things through. That was just before lockdown happened. He then disappeared off the face of the earth. I've had emails from him however, on just after the papers had gone out, saying, oh, this is now the person, this person's changed, this is me, we will get back to you. So they seem to have resurfaced. And they've also now worked out, we've now got a fresh name for somebody who's responsible for the site as well. So they've just cleared up around Surrumball's well or just had photos that cleared up around it, which we've been asked them to do for a while. So it looks like they're back on track and we'll be able to discuss things with them again, hopefully.
Thank you. Robin?
Can I suggest the way forward this? Because I think we're asking you to go and have discussions. I think we need a formal meeting now with the developers and ask whether David Rowley from the Buckinghamshire Council can attend, because he's going to be dealing with the internals there. And that it'll be, it'll be the officer who's got to do all the adoptions and stuff. So rather than excluding from the conversation, let's include him in the conversation. Because he, he will be a great help to everybody unpicking some of the niceties. I've been working with him on Lace Hill, which has been a difficult affair, to say the least. And try and get a meeting. So we've got a meeting with some minutes, which we can have the chairman attend and appropriate people and, and, and get something wrote down and agreed and a way forward. Because historically, we had an agreement from the now historical district councillor over the commuted sum. That needs to be moved forward, but that's key. We had a, an understanding from them historically to move it forward. But without that commuted sum, all the other conversations are, and we haven't had the precise amount of monies yet. Now, if I'm asked exactly out of the meeting, what question is wanted on that, I'll go and find it out. But I left it after getting it to a point with Paul because of the coronavirus. But if he needs me to re-enter into the conversation, I'll re-enter into it. But I didn't want to, you know, conflate things. But I do think we need a meeting at some point, even on Zoom or something. So we've got something tangible which involves the chair and the vice chair and somebody in it, so that there's more than me having a meeting with someone, the town clerk, and it becomes the council's property, the discussion, you know?
Would that be okay with you, Paul?
Yeah, absolutely.
As a way forward. Great. Okay, thank you. Item 13, gazebo for Shandos Park Bowls Club. And we've got the reports and a picture of what it would look like. And the recommendation is that permission's given to Shandos Bowls Club to build a pergola at the car. Mike Smith and Robin Stuttry.
Proposed that we accept the recommendation, Chair.
I think, I think it's ideal, ideal, Chair. I could, I could sit under there quite happily. Yeah.
Lisa?
Yeah, I'm happy to go to recommendation. Margaret?
I am, except that the photo isn't, it, it just, it says request for permission for a pergola. Now, in my opinion, that isn't a pergola. And I think in the agenda, it said gazebo. I don't, you know, as long as we've got, we're actually agreeing on the right thing. And they say, look, we asked for a gazebo and, you know, we need to make sure that we're agreeing on the right construction, if you know what I mean.
Yeah.
Because it looks very nice, the picture, but is that really, is that just a sort of artistic impression? Or is that really what we're getting?
Picture they sent us, I think it was off Amazon, I think it was.
Mike and then Robin?
I, I think in, in giving our approval, we could say providing it matches as near as damn it, the picture that you sent us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's right, yeah.
Robin?
I think it's important we agree it so they can get on and do it, because they're not that much of these and that. And if they get definite, you know, they don't need anything extra. They, they need to get the best. They are, I spoke to some people who use it the other day, and they are managing with safe distancing by using different courts. So they are operating at reduced level. And if you're waiting there and you want someone to sit out, why not?
Yeah, we're all happy with that, aren't we?
Yeah.
Right, the next item is the reopening of public toilets. And you've got the written report and the recommendation that the toilets in Cornwall's Meadow and the disabled cubicle in Shandos Park are reopened ASAP with additional safety measures. And that is an additional daily clean at, at an additional cost of £60 a week and the cost of additional signage of £120 taken from budget 2544612. Lots of hands. And I don't know who was first. Who would like to go first?
Let's go to Christine.
I might be in first. I'd be happy to go to propose that we go with the recommendation, but I just wanted to ask one question about when we say that the toilets in Cornwall's Meadow, is that including the changing places?
Yeah.
Disabled?
It's all of those, because, because they're all single cubicles, it counts them as them all.
Yeah, okay, I, I propose that we go with recommendation.
Mike?
I just wanted to inquire whether the intention was for the disabled toilet in Shandos Park to be used by able and less able people. Because that's what's going to happen.
At the moment, no, that, that uses a radar key. So you'd need to be, you know, have a radar key and it, so which is specifically disabled use. There might be a slight delay on that. I went down there Thursday to check everything out. And the door lock is playing up, so I need to get a locksmith out, but I'm hoping to get that sorted this week, so that's imminent as well.
We'd, we'd have to make that very clear, that it's only the disabled toilet open for those with a key on any publicity about it.
Yeah.
Margaret?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's really important we get the toilets open now the town centre's open. Can I just make one additional request? But I would like advice on this in the light of the COVID-19. I, as a regular user, user of public toilets, I noticed immediately, are they open? There isn't anywhere to hang a bag. It's something that probably women tend to have more bags around their persons than men. But there's nowhere to hang a bag. Now, that means if you've got a bag with you, you have to put it on the floor, which isn't great. And I'm not sure with the COVID-19, whether that becomes even more of an issue at the moment, hanging it on a hook or putting it on the floor. But I think that's an issue that does need to be addressed. And I, I, I don't, I mean, most public toilets, there are hooks behind the door.
Andy?
Thank you. I totally agree with councillor Gateley. Yes, we definitely must have a hook. Because the moment you put your bag on the floor, you then take it home and then put it on the dining room table or on a work surface. And that is so unhygienic. So yes, can we please have a hook?
Robin?
We're taking on board the councillor Gate's comments, which are wise. Can we agree this subject to arrangements being made where possible for someone to hang their bag? Because we've had a, an obvious problem raised. We shouldn't agree it and then try and do it afterwards. I would like to put an amendment that we agree it subject to making those arrangements.
Councillor Gateley?
I understand, Robin, but I think it's important we get the toilets open as soon as we can. And, and that would just delay because it would, you know, with the best will in the world, it might seem very simple, but it is going to take a little while for that to be sorted. And I think in the meantime, the need is there for the point, the toilets to be in use.
Christine?
Thank, thank you, yeah. Thank you, Margaret. Yes, I do so agree, because really, it is so, you know, desperate if you're going anywhere, that you need the toilets. You know, from my own point of view, if I go into the town, you know, I've got to go to the toilet. I, I can't actually apart from staying in for health reasons at the moment, but I can't go to the town without having to, to loot. It's impossible.
Mike?
Not me, it's going to be a lot of people.
Mike?
I, I totally agree that there needs to be a, a hook to hang your coat or bag on. It's a 10 minute job to drill a hole, wall plug it and, and stick a hook up. I can't, I can't see any problem with, with just going ahead with that on the day the place we open them. I'm sure, I'm sure our guys are more than capable of sticking a hook on a couple of walls, or a couple of hooks on a couple of walls.
Robin?
Well, just, you know, councillor Andy Marion identified taking your bag out and putting it on top. We have discussed the health consequences about that. So now we know the health consequences about it. We're making the decision, having discussed consequences of making our decision. That's why I said subject to. But what Mike said makes sense. It, it could be done reasonably quickly with a cordless drill and a set of whatever and pop into the hardware shop and get the bits. It could be easily done, unless there's some reason we can't drill into the actual, the one in Shandos Park because there's electrical stuff beyond the walls. I don't see any issue. Just get, you know.
Lee, do you know whether it's, whether it's an easy thing to do to put hooks up?
Yeah, it should be fairly straightforward. I'm, I'm not 100% sure. They haven't got hooks already, to be honest. I'll have to have a look.
Okay. So we'll have a look and then we'll get it sorted. And then we'll open the toilets.
Same time as we open them.
Are we going to get the new, the new mayor to go and reopen them?
Okay, so we're happy with the reopening the toilets and we agree the additional budget.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And we'll get the hooks, hooks put up.
Better put either on the budget then for a couple of hooks.
Yeah. Item 15, the town central audit. And thank you very much to, is it Nina that's put the report together?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just flicking between my screens. So you should, sorry, you should receive the coloured spreadsheet now, which was updated earlier on this morning. So thank you to everybody that took part in the town central audit earlier in the year. It resulted in 129 reports ranging from broken, dirty signs to potholes in the road and on the pavement. Various streetlights and pedestrian crossings that needed improvements and upgrades. So the majority of which have now been reported to the appropriate authorities. There are a number which are still under review. So there's about 94 in fact, which are still being investigated. There are, there are five currently which have been registered or updated to say that they've been inspected. But there's no planned repair necessary at this stage. So somebody's been out and But there's no planned repair necessary at this stage, so somebody's been out and measured the size of the. Pothole or the deterioration in the pavement. Um there are currently um eleven which have been inspected and adding to the programme of works. So actually on the spreadsheet that you've received, I think I've updated this as green. And put them as complete, which obviously they're not complete, they're just, they've been added to a programme of work. So they.
Where's this, where's this spreadsheet, Nina?
Uh the full agenda pack.
Yeah.
Last attachment.
Yeah.
So there was, depends when you downloaded the full agenda pack, Mike, if you downloaded it before today.
I'm looking at it from the council website.
Okay, so it should be a fairly colourful.
No, it's black on white or blue on white and that's it.
Oh. I ju- I downloaded the full pack uh earlier.
Fine with me.
Yeah. Coloured online.
Yeah, me too.
I can pull it up from somewhere else, hold on.
Download it and open it in PDF Europe, it might, it might be that. Robin.
Yeah. Just one question, thank you for doing it and complying it, Nina, firstly. Um we could thank you for the work you've done on this. One of the problems I'm aware of. Is when you report something and it goes through the system of the reporting matrix. Often it comes back saying doubt with. And actually, it's never been dealt with or words to that effect. Um and I had an incident on uh the industrial estate. Where it said, uh your your thing has been investigated. No answer. Um I think that. We should somehow try to. Get some of these things actually out of that system because. It appears that fix my street system, if you try it out, can be that repeat peaking thing. And then it comes back with a report saying it's investigated and it's and you don't really get anything. Real reasons why it is. I've got a letter from the cabinet member on something completely different. Which which was which which was better than the fix my streets thing, so. I think all this work that's gone into it, and most of them are town centre things, aren't they? Um maybe we need a discussion with the. Um with those members and and ask them whether they're going to take some of these matters forward for us. Um have discussions about them. Um we, the the people who've done this have done all the groundwork. And I expect, looking at the time this was done. I bet the late councillor Lysham would always love these things, probably did some of it as well. Um he always loved this audit and he was quite keen for us to get on and do it and. I can remember him discussing this in one of the last meetings he attended. So I think we owe it to Derek that that we um. We ask some of those councillors who've got the town centre to take some of these things on, not all of them. But the ones which affect disability, the ones that affect the ability to trade with the coronavirus lockdown. And those things and try to get them to go and follow them up as councillors now and see where they can get with them. If any which come to uh are out of in my area, you you treat me the same. Because I think we could be stuck in a loop on this. And all the work which is. Has been undertaken to everyone's credit, might just keep going around the loop with it like we did before. And the question will come back, we haven't got any money or we haven't got any resources. But then that's actually. A question that needs discussing if they haven't allocated any money for these sort of things, what are they spending it on? You know, we've got a town centre which needs to thrive. Our group's got a town centre that needs to thrive. They never seem to have any worry when it comes to. Plowing tens of millions of pounds into the Algu Town Centre. Um our our shops and our centres and our people in this town are just as important, they pay the same council tax. So I just suggested we send it to the councillors, uh uh break it down. Give them something to do.
And just coming back on that, it wouldn't be, it'd be no hardship for me to send our Buckinghamshire councillors a copy of. This spreadsheet with relevant links and also.
Well, I think it has to be done by area because then you get into the nonsense of. If you send it to everyone, they won't do anything because the answer, that's not in my area.
Which is not, I mean, it's broken down by area currently in terms of.
No, it has to be broken down by, if you hear me out. It has to be broken down by the political area that they represent.
By ward.
By ward, yes. Otherwise, it's a wasted time. It's broken down by area, but it has to be the ward delineate. You know, the things that councillor Charlie, Claire and Howard and I and Patrick Feeley have got now. Um won't be stuff that Tim and Warren and um and Simon Cole has got. Plus somebody else, I think, who who touched the boundary once and now is a councillor there as well. Um. So I think we 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 need to do that, just to see where we get it. I'm happy for the stuff which is, once it's identified to be in my area. Working with the other three councillors to try and move it along. And and if we get nowhere, then you can say, well, we didn't get anywhere and why didn't we get anywhere?
John. John.
Um just to say, surely all of these are in uh north of the river, aren't they? They're in the centre of town. So none of them are in your in your ward at all, Robin. Or Charlie's or Patrick's or Howard's. They're all in the ward that belongs to now, um Tim, uh Warren, uh Simon.
In which case we ask them to go move it forward.
Yeah, there's no, there's nothing in there that we stayed within the, none of us went below the river, did we?
No.
South of the river.
No.
That was, that was good, wasn't it? I didn't know that, I I ends up, I didn't, I didn't know that when I suggested that, and totally.
And thank you to all the councillors who took part in it as well. And we've already thanked Nina, haven't we, for putting it all together? Thank you.
Yeah, it's really good.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, next item is news releases, so we'll have to put in about when the toilets are opening.
Touch us around this, yes.
The additional bits that we're putting in about that. Um extra cleaning and everything. And hopefully the water fountain when that goes in. Is there anything else that councillors would like us to do news releases on?
Might it, um chairman, might it be worth reminding people using the parks and that? To either use the bins if they can or if the bins are full to take their rubbish home?
Um. Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry, I did, I missed, I missed access awareness to nine number sixteen. Sorry. So go back to that one now.
First, I've I've been trying to get in touch with and I've got in touch with quite a few people who are. Either on the access committee or, you know, as I know of anyway and. I think, you know, they all seem to be very patient people who are saying they're quite happy, thank you, you know, even if they're not able to go out at the moment. So there's not much um demand, I mean, right. As I said in here tonight, I got just news that somebody's died, but you know, apart from. People who are still okay. Are just, you know, putting up with it. I think they're mainly used to putting up with things.
Yeah. Robin.
Well, we've just done the item beforehand and many of the things on there were access issues. I proposed that we sent them to the councillors, it went deadly silent. And then we didn't um move it on, nobody seconded it, so that fell. After we identified that it was the electoral division and then John pointed out that, quite rightly, that it was all in Buckingham North.
Yeah, no, I I thought we'd agreed that.
We did, we had. Well, these areas of disability access, when people start getting out into the town. And I watched a gentleman going around the market and to the credit of our market trader. He moved everything to make sure he could get in and out of his electric wheelchair on Saturday and get through. And we, those things on, little things on disability, it'd be quite upsetting if they all get back out into the town. Find out that the town's actually not improving on oil since they were last able to have the privilege of trombling around the town. Then we need to make sure those disability ones on that list get to the top of the list, you know.
Councillor Smith.
Yeah, there's a a a message, a message from councillor Cole today about. Him having to uh help somebody with a mobility scooter and hold up traffic and that so that they could get past um. Clays uh because of the narrow pavement and that and still maintain um a a degree of distancing and that. And these these things, I I think we shouldn't lose sight of. Um we 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 need to consider them in any sort of planned layout of the town or revised layout of the town or. Or whatever it is that um the Buckinghamshire Council decide we may or may not be able to do, they they seem to have been able to get. Princess Risper sorted out and another couple as well. Um but I think we need to be very, very mindful of 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 the measures that go in. Particularly with regard to mobility scooters, people with um uh dependent on wheelchairs and so forth.
Yeah. Christine.
If I could just come in, yeah, councillor Smith is quite right there because, you know, there are a lot of people with the mobility scooters haven't been. Out and about. You know, they are going to find it very difficult, say, so queues outside of shops and difficulty getting in. And you know, you hope everything goes fine, but there's always the example of clays, you know, what do you do? As Mike has pointed out, you know, if someone's got to go on the road. It's it's just not safe, so.
Yeah.
There's a good, good reason that we should be looking at close, road closure, however temporary.
Robin.
I think we're talking about an item which has been sent round by email by the. Um deputy chair of planning and previous met. I think you all must be aware that that what's being proposed is already. There's a programme out to do it and it's basically most of the fair road closure. And I think you have to be aware that what the fair road closure would mean if we shut. The town centre down there, what that actually means. I think we need to be quite sensitive about discussing all those things. Um because what we must be really sure of is that. With signage for the fair, you may have noticed that when you go to the fair, where we have to put signage in that. I presume we'll discuss it in full, I don't want to discuss that motion tonight, but I do think we have to take everything into consideration.
Yeah, it's a full council, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, item eighteen, chairs announcements. Just that we've got an an additional meeting on the twenty ninth of July to do tenders and um. We'll also look at John's paper again and probably also the Lace Hill snake that. Robin has um been involved with. And then the next meeting is on the twenty ninth of July at seven P M. Thank you all for your attendance.
Thank you, babe.
And thank you for electing me as chair for another year.
Everybody have a safe journey home.
Thank you.